Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on July 18, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment? You can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one raise their hand or step forward, we'll close public comment number one. Next on the agenda, we have a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5 Sub 1C. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. We are now in closed session. Okay, we will reconvene the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Back in open session, we're going to move to item seven. We have no action on item seven, moving to agency reports. We have Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report. Good morning.
Well, this isn't too long the report, but I'll just read down through here. This is for our fourth quarter, April 1 to June 30. During the fourth quarter, we interviewed 160 veterans and/or surviving spouses for eligibility for federal, state, and county VA benefits. Three of those veterans came in for assistance with, for rent. That was $1,681. And one veteran came in for assistance for utilities, $263.77 for a grand total of $1,944.77. And then the rest of it was state and federal benefits that we do service work on. So out of the 160, though, 131 were men, 29 women. Six of those served during World War II, eight served during the Korean War, 67, which is always our leader there, Vietnam War. Thirty-two during the Persian Gulf War, 10 during Cold War, which is in between all the wars. Fourteen served in Iraq or Afghanistan, one National Guard, and 22 surviving spouses of veterans. For outreach for the quarter, went to Colo on May 17th, spent the day over there, and also Cambridge on May 24th. I had some education during the quarter. We had our, our spring VA school was held in April down in Des Moines. And then I attended the National School in Madison, Wisconsin in June. Story County Freedom Flight, we, we went with Brushy Creek. And we took nine of our Story County veterans to DC, and I did accompany those nine. We left at four in the morning and got back the next morning at 1:35. So little bit of a, little bit of a long day. Our next flight is going to be Wednesday, September the 13th. Currently, we have 13 on our list to go. And it'll be kind of the same thing, leave about four in the morning. We go up to Fort Dodge and fly out of, out of Fort Dodge with Sun Country. Registration is open for anyone who has not gone. And they, they just have to serve from the first day of World War II to the last day of Vietnam and anywhere in between. So it's really open for that group. Probably won't get them on the September flight, but we'd be able to get them on the May of 2024 flight. And this group is really, has this trip down because September will be their 25th time that they've taken veterans to DC, so. So yeah, for a trip of a lifetime to stop in at VA. If you know of any veterans that haven't gone, and we can get you registered. We ended the fiscal year with our budget pretty close, around 90, 98% is what we use out of the budget, so. And that's all I have besides to, in front of you, you have our Story County Supermarket Veterans Benefits Flyer. We're doing something a little bit different, maybe for the folks, for the veterans that are still working. So we're going to do it on a Saturday. We're going to do a little, it'll be a little bit shorter than, than our normal all-day Friday, just for the agencies to come up and help us out with that. But it's going to be Saturday, November the 18th, it's going to be at the Plex. We'll do a short opening at nine, and we'll run it till 12. That day, so invite you to stop out, which I think you always do. I think every, each board member's been out there.
Yeah.
A time or two, if not every, every time, right? So. It'll be in the, it'll be in the same, it'll be in the same location there at the Plex, at that gymnasium at the back, so.
That's worked out pretty well, hasn't it?
Yes, it does, you know.
Yes.
Parking's great, you know, getting in the buildings, no problem. And plus, we got that big space back there for everybody, so.
Which is great.
Hope to have, you know, all of our agencies that can help out, kind of a one-stop shop. So if you, you know, state benefits or any kind of federal benefits. Live and do, we've been doing free haircuts for veterans.
Yeah, that's great. That's so cool.
If you just, if the veterans just want a haircut and a donut and a cup of coffee, just come on out, so.
So this is possibly the last flight before you disband?
Yeah, they keep, they keep talking about that, but right now they're talking about May of next year. I believe they have enough to do that one. Now, there's some folks in this group that have actually gone on every one of these flights.
Wow.
The chair of the group is in his 80s. They're, they're kind of, they're getting to a point, but they, they've kind of opened it up to this cold, the Cold War parts, you know, in between all the wars. To get more people out there, so. Yeah, so I mean, I'm really urging the veterans, if you, if you want to go. And it is a trip of a lifetime. And, and I tell them, whatever you expect the trip to be, it's more than that. It's just really amazing, but if any veterans out there that want to go, I mean, now's the time to get signed up. And we'll get you out there. So. On the, on the, on the last trip, we actually had chaperones that had a, you know, a triangle flag folded up with a photo of a veteran who was actually on, was supposed to go on the flight but passed away. We, we did four of those. And what we do is we take them around to each memorial and take a picture and for their family. So.
Wow.
Nice.
And it's nice. Well, it does sound like a trip of a lifetime.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, any other questions? Thank you so much. Appreciate, appreciate your work and your presentations.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Ames Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development, Workforce Retraining and Outreach Quarterly Report. Good morning.
Good morning.
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 And just remember to speak directly into the microphone.
Got it.
Thank you. Look, you're up. Good morning, supervisors.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us today. My name is Greg Picklaugh. I am Director of Economic Development Outreach for the Ames Chamber, Ames EDC, as part of your contract for rural economic development. I, I will say the past four months have been extremely busy and things that normally would not be considered, for lack of a better term, targeted for rural economic development. The report you have in front of you and also on the screen, you'll see the different projects here, but I've taken inquiries for other things too regarding housing. I've taken quality of life, trails, grants, economic development groups in these smaller communities that are jump-started for the first time in decades. New blood, new eagerness, new, new hunger to tackle big projects. So that has been very, very nice thing to see. Let me start by asking, or do you have any questions on anything in the report, just to start things off before I go through it?
Go right ahead.
All right. Just a couple of big highlights here. Next month, we are in Gilbert at a council meeting where we're going to be discussing a $1.8 million light commercial project. This is property that is within city limits, that has been targeted for such development for the past 10 years. This is something that is very, very exciting. It's something that Gilbert has been working with the developer on for many months. And hopefully, we have a very nice result at the next council meeting in August. So that is a very exciting role in what is not happening in Roland at this point. New plans for City Hall, the move has been completed. The first city council meeting in the new building, which is the old bank building in Avalia, is happening on Wednesday. There is going to be a big ribbon cutting, I believe, later this month, but full facilities and full staff has moved over. McCall'sburg, I got a meeting later this afternoon with Story County Housing Trust on two potential lots. For housing development, I have another developer that's interested in the remaining four. Cambridge, we're targeting a boost grant, visioning, going to take an inventory of vacant buildings in Cambridge. We're going to be targeting new housing development and current vacant buildings to see about infill demolition and startup program there. And then going through, I got Colo Childcare, you've all been invited to the ribbon cutting in August. We did have a press release that'll be going out on the 20th from ITC for a $5,000 grant. Nikki's going to touch on that a little bit more, but that is going to be going out here as well. And then lastly, Maxwell, the rehab program for the funds from Story County Housing Trust. We had nine applications, six viable ones, three were funded and maxed out the, the funds that we had. The three homes that were targeted and approved were ADA compliance, a hole in the roof, and helping with heating and cooling, especially in this time of year. So that is three programs, three homes are going to be hopefully done here in the next two months. So that is another, another huge win. Maxwell now has a viable housing rehab program. It's something they're going to start applying for every year from Story County Housing. It's something they're going to start targeting other funds for as well, to start doing this every year. And I'm open to any questions. Uh, three things at the bottom, you'll see concurrent projects, EV charging stations. This is something that came up from the Fed earlier this year, wasn't applicable this time around because of the fact being that it was so soon. But I have six communities interested in EV charging stations. They're going to be level two charging stations, and I am working with the City of Ames so we can stretch it, so we can cover more territory. Casey's General Stores is interested in partnering in these communities. So it's something where they're looking to partner with it and then work with us on the location and, and maybe split the cost on the joint partnership side of it. Real broadband grants, they are open for our broadband opportunity zones. We are going to be applying for a grant here most likely in the next 10 days for the joint overlap opportunity zone in Story County and Boone County. And that is looking to probably be about a $2 million grant application. That is what we're looking at right now from my earliest numbers I got back from Patrick.
Good.
Yep. And then City Nevada, this is not one of my communities, but I wanted to put it on there because I've been helping facilitate conversations with Union Pacific. Do with Supervisor Basil on train blockages, public safety, things like that. And then also too, because they service so many emergency services on the east side of Story County, those are my world's. And they need services and backup, and if there's train blockages, they can't get there. So I've been helping facilitate those conversations, and they've been going well. Story County Sheriff and City and us are going to keep moving forward and start working on options for better communication so they can divert resources quicker.
Yeah, I, I want to say thank you for organizing that last conversation because it's my understanding that things have gotten better as far as the number of crossings and the length of time. They're still happening.
They're still happening.
Um, but there's clearly some effort to make sure they're not extended periods of time or as extended.
Thank you. And thank you for attending as well. We had Supervisor Basil, we had ourself in our, in our Ames Chamber. We had City, and we had Story County Sheriff there as well. And there's really been great communication happening and better, better flow of information. So, thank you.
Any questions? Any other questions? All right.
We'll pass the time.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. Nikki Fisher with the Ames Chamber, Director of Workforce Development Diversity. So the report, again, will have a lot of information. Obviously, I do this every day, so tell me to slow down or let me know if you have any questions. If I start talking too fast. So retraining program is honestly going great this year. So this quarter, we had another 21. Graduated, we had CNA's, IT Help Desk, Advanced CNA and CDL. The, there's also a few in dog grooming that are finishing up. And it's crazy to me that I didn't realize there was like a class for that. Obviously, you have to be very skilled in order to work with all these dogs, but it's really neat to see all these different classes. And there was a student with IT Help Desk that graduated, got a job with a startup company. Or I shouldn't say a startup company, but they just started in the research park. They moved their headquarters to the research park. And, but there, a lot of the work that they do because it's with wheat is down in Kansas. And so she's actually kind of writing her own job description, and they're giving her a lot of leverage on that. And so she's super excited. She's super excited to get into the community. She has a young family, and so it's just always fun to hear, you know, as they take jobs, how it kind of changes that. And she's super excited. She's looking at fuel, so like the young professionals and like really trying to get into. So all great things. But yes, so students, so we had students from, you know, Colo, Gilbert, Maxwell, Nevada, Roland, Zering, Ames. So we are really finally getting out into those smaller communities, and people are really able to use the program. Um, so our average age this quarter was 34. And we did have the six students take jobs, and then seven, like they just finished their CNA, like right as the quarter was ending. So we did have their meet and greet, and it went great. So I, those students should be getting jobs here shortly, but. So we did have that as far as some of the workforce things. So back in May, we had our open house, which was an all-day event out at the Iowa National Guard in Boone. And it was very well-attended. It was a great day. It was fun to just kind of see all of the things that the National Guard does and have the employers be able to talk to some of the soldiers and everything. We will be having the career fair portion of it in October because that will be a dual drill weekend. So that's kind of why there's that big, you know, date difference in, from the open house to the career fair. But we'll have over 200-plus soldiers attending that, so that'll be nice. The last time that we did it in December, we had 24 soldiers take jobs from that career fair. So that's always great. Teaching for the workforce, we did that again this June. We had 23 teachers. We even had some, we had one from like Bondurant Farrar. There was one that was just getting back into, they had taken some time away from teaching. They were getting back into it, and so they wanted to come and just, you know, see what was new in that. But that was a great experience. They got to do a lot of different things. We went over to Story County, the sheriffs, and so, you know, we got to talk to them, and they got to see the jail. And they, they fed us, you know, the, the lunch and everything. And so it was, you know, always a big surprise on how amazing the lunch can be there. But always a great event, had great feedback. You know, they always say, you know, it's not enough time. They would love more. But you know, with, we have great partners at DMAC, and you know, we try to put as much as we can in. So the Colo-NESCO Childcare, so yes, we have a ribbon cutting and like an open house. So the day before, we are all going to come to work in our jeans and t-shirt, and we're going to finish moving in fully that day. The, the rooms are ready. We went and walked through them last week. The rooms are ready, the buzzers are in, the lights are installed, and then like everything is just ready for it to all go. I believe there were six children, don't quote me on that, already signed up. And so they're hoping that with a ribbon cutting and like an open house, and we'll do some pizza and water and stuff like that, that, then the parents will really know that it's real. Along with that project, they are also opening up Monday up in Zering because that's where they also lost a lot of families is because they had their preschool, but it was only Tuesday through Friday. With opening up Monday, they've already had 14 students say that they will be attending. So that's huge for them. And then we also have another grant that we are looking at. It's with the Iowa Women's Foundation, so we are looking to submit our interest letter here soon, and then it'll take some time to, you know, go through that process. So still continue to look for funding. And then future events, so we had our Women in Leadership, which was a great night. Hopefully, you saw some of the social media or anything, but it was a great evening. We do have one last one coming up in October. And where that program goes, I'm not 100% sure, but I've got a great committee, and we'll just kind of talk through and go through all the surveys and the feedback. We've got a minority business event coming up in August. So excited for that. We've never done an event quite like that. We do have Ryan, he's a professor at Iowa State, who's actually helping us to run that workshop that day. A lot of expertise, so really excited about that. And then also the Ames MSA Future Ready Night. So this is something that I really wanted to do. It's a, a big ask, but I've partnered with Scan and some of our other partners. And it'll be one night for all juniors and seniors in the Ames MSA to come, and they will hear from FAFSA first. Because there's a lot of changes going on with FAFSA. So the first hour, they will hear from FAFSA and be able to talk to people directly about FAFSA. And then after that, we're going to have some pizza and water, of course. And then we're going to have, it's going to be College, University, Military, and Career Fair. And it'll be at the Ames High School in their Commons area. We'll use the auditorium for the FAFSA portion of it. So that we can really help all students with whatever is after high school. So this will be the first time. So we tried to pick a date in October where there weren't a whole lot of activities, and I've already sent the schools the information, so hopefully they don't plan too much at that time so that we can kind of all come together. Yeah. And then, sorry, my screen just went blank. Would you go down for me? I think the rest is pretty much the statistics. So, you know. All, as always, you know, all of our social media gets seen a lot. You know, we've tried to put up, you know, as much information as possible on the workinames.com as well as the Ames Chamber social media pages. So I think that is about it. Oh, yes. No, it's not. So see yourself an Ames. Also, program for our interns, a lot of businesses this year asked, well, we didn't do interns, but we have a lot of really young professionals. And I'm like, please send them. They still need to know all of the great things that are happening in our community. And so we've had at least 100 participants at each event, and we have one more event coming up. It's been a lot of fun. The last one was a really fun one, and we got some really good feedback from the interns. We weren't sure how they were going to like it, but we took them on like a progressive day. And so we started at Seven Oaks and fed them, and they got to learn about Seven Oaks. Then we took them to the Arboretum, and they got to see the new treehouse area. And we fed them some more food, and then we took them to gatherings and gave them some dessert. And the farmer's market was going on at the same time, so they got to walk around the farmer's market. But they really got to see kind of from one side of the MSA to the other side of things that you can do all in one night. So they really enjoyed it, and we got buses and put them all on and then dropped them back off at Jack Trice. And so it was, it was a fun four hours. It was very quick, but a lot of really great feedback. So I think that is it. Any questions?
Great. Thanks a lot.
I know.
Nikki, are you working with the folks with Project Iowa for the workforce retraining? Have you had any conversations with them?
Yeah. So I've met a few of them because there's a few different volunteers, and I've met a few of them. You know, we've exchanged information and, you know, we talk all the time about, you know, do you have people that we kind of cross?
Right.
Because they play really well into each other. We haven't had anything like that where, you know, there's actually been an individual that has done that. But yeah, we, I've met, I think I've got three different individuals that I've met as far as the volunteers. And we've sat down, had coffee, and talked about how we can kind of really help promote. And if they have something come up and they have like a new flyer or something, they always send it to me, and we always try to promote that as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Wonderful, because you're in all the communities, and I know, you know, like you said, they, the, the two programs play well together.
Right.
So what would be ideal is to see the people participate in the Project Iowa programming and then just naturally move into the programming, the workforce retraining programming. I, I get really excited when I think about, you know, I know the good things that are happening with people's lives with the work that, that the workforce retraining program is, is doing. And I just know the impact that, that could have on others who maybe aren't ready for that.
Yeah.
Workforce retraining piece yet. So keep, keep us posted on that because I'm really excited to see how that, how that can work together.
Yeah.
The Colo-NESCO Childcare, are you working with high school students? Are they working with high school students to help staff it? I know YSS is going to be doing a large part of that, but it would be great to see the opportunity for students in those communities to participate and get some work experience.
Yeah, so that was the main focus for like the part-time. So one of the teachers actually has classes for them because you have to have like your CPR and things like that. And so I believe they had two to three that were juniors last year, so they'd be seniors this year, that they were going to be in contact with. I haven't heard an update on that, but I know that like the teachers on the task force and, you know, with teachers being, you know, trying to enjoy some time. I haven't had an update, but that is exactly where we were going with the part-time part of it.
Okay.
And I think even some of the preschool teachers as well.
Okay, can you get us, can, at the next report, can you bring us hard numbers on, this is how many students for sure are going to be, or this is where they are in the pipeline?
Oh, yeah.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
And then the future ready, is there advertising happening then throughout Story County for the future ready night? And what does that look like?
Yes, so I don't have it yet, just because it's not till October, so I'm trying to get my marketing team to give them a little breather. But we will be marketing. I have let all the school districts, all the principals, superintendents, and some of the teachers that I communicate with a lot, let them know of the night that there will be flyers. It will be for juniors and seniors and their families only, just because there's only so much space.
Right.
Um, but yeah, we'll definitely get it targeted to all seven school districts. So, but I mean, they have got one initial like, hey, just FYI, this will be coming. I just don't have a flyer yet, email from me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I, because I believe you had a really good turnout when you did it in Story City. Was it Story City?
Yeah, the Roland.
Yeah.
Roland. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. That was a really good one, so.
Sorry, I don't have any other questions.
I, one, one quick thing I forgot to mention because Shelby just texted me before we came up here. Jiminy Crickets and the facade Grant in Collins, they received their IEDA walkthrough yesterday for the catalyst grant. They are fine. So she is looking to have everything done hopefully right after the state fair, after she's down at the, the fairgrounds for two weeks. But late August, early September, she, she was going to be extending an invitation for everyone to come down and get a tour and, and have a celebration of everyone that partnered with her on this effort.
That's great.
Have a cricket.
And have a cricket.
That's exciting.
I said cricket cookies. She made no promises, but she promised that she would definitely want to send an invite.
Wonderful. We'll have regular cookies too.
That one's smothering in chocolate.
Thank you both. We appreciate your work. Thank you. Um, next, we have consideration of minutes from July 11, 2023.
I move approval of minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions is listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. If consideration of claims next.
I move approval of claims is presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consent agenda?
I move approval of consent agenda items is listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. We have no public hearing items today. Additional items, we have discussion and consideration of website link request for birth injury justice center. Morning, Leanne. It is still morning.
The next two items on your agenda are website link requests. I put them individually so that you could take action on them individually. From this point going forward, they will likely be on the consent agenda. You just have never seen one before you. So I want to take a time, some time to explain the nature of their requests. Several years ago, when we redid our website, we had a number of entities asking to have their websites posted on our, their websites listed on our website and linked to that, their website. Through some different reviews of the websites that we had linked to, it found inappropriate websites or websites that were no longer valid or changed their URLs. Irrelevant, whatever that may, case may be. So the website link request policy was established. So for those entities that wish to have Story County list their website on storycountyiowa.gov, they go online, they fill out the form and they select one of the, one or more of the criteria that they deem eligible or applicable, and my apologies, applicable. And if staff agrees with that, we put a link to their, or we incorporate their website link on our website. If they don't meet any of the criteria that I listed in the memo, they have a last selection they can make, and that's other links may be considered by the board of supervisors. So that is why we are here today. Both of these two entities have asked to have the board considering incorporating a link. I will tell you right now, I have a little bit of concern with both, just in the sheer fact that we have no control to tell. We will need to monitor whether they make any changes to our website to make sure that it remains compliant with our policies. And also to make sure that it's not inappropriate content. At now, this time it appears both these websites would be, provide good information, and we could perhaps incorporate that into written documents and resources and share with our social service entities. But my recommendation on both of these would not to include the, the link. But I wanted to go through the process, have the board have an opportunity, because obviously you do manage or you control what is incorporated into the website. I'll be glad to answer any questions. After this, if I do get any more requests, or if we receive any more requests, they'll go on consent by one opportunity. Let you know why, why it was before you. And if it's on consent, it'll have a recommendation as well.
So Leanne, I do have a question on this, on this, this particular one, the brain injury justice center. So I looked at the site last week when you sent it out and have it again today. It looks a lot that it's geared towards litigation. Identifying, you know, identifying that. The entity itself is from, I think, Massachusetts. Massachusetts. Yeah. So how much of the contact is here? I don't know. I didn't look through our website, but how much are we on promoting legal, legal information besides like, you know, legal aid or, you know, the state of Iowa's legal thing? That was just my concern with this particular site, even going to the resources and other areas on their, their topics area. It talks about, you know, was this negligence or whatever, and then directs you to, do you want a case review done versus kind of other supportive information? That would be a concern.
I share that concern as well.
I think if we put anything on our website, people will imply some kind of endorse.
Yep. Right.
And that's one reason I'm not crazy about it. The other one is there are tons of good causes out there. And we could be putting, you know, what doors are we opening? If we, if we do this, I think it just has to really clearly, if we put something on, it really has to clearly talk about, you know, county government, county responsibilities or services to our county residents.
Yep.
And these are very, you know, could be fine, could be not fine. We don't know. And to take all the time to vet them even. And monitor afterwards, I'm, I'm not, I would, I would have to see a positive proactive reason to put it on our website rather than reasons not to. That's my sense on this whole topic. So I, I agree with you, what you're recommending.
It, it is amazing. Over the past few years, I've received several website link requests that have not met any of the criteria. And have said that, I've said, well, your other options go before the board of supervisors, and they've dropped it at that point. These were the first two that have said, let's, let me go forward to the board.
I think it's a good process.
But they're not here.
No.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we would deny the website link request for birth injuries justice center.
A second.
Moved and seconded Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye.
And I would move that we deny the request for the rehab dot com website.
Second. Moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you.
If the board's okay, I will send a letter to them on your behalf. Thank you. Indicating that your decision, and are you agreeable that unless there's a major issue, it will go on consent from this point forward? With the explanatory memo?
Yep, that would be fine. Thank you.
You will give us your written recommendation.
Yes, we'll include one in that case.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have departmental reports, engineers quarterly report. Morning, Darren.
Good morning.
And then just a reminder, talk directly into the microphone.
Okay.
Thanks.
Let me start on the maintenance work side of things. Most of our time this summer on maintenance side has been spent repairing culvert issues. We've had a number of high number of holes show up in our roadways this year. Due to failed culverts, the last one was on North Dakota pavement, right in the curved areas there. We had some culverts rusted through and the pavement started collapsing. So we did emergency repair on that last week and did a concrete patch and got that back opened up. Our summer help will be focused on mowing now that we're past the July 15 mowing date. And then our second application of dust control will go down next week. Moving on to construction, we have 11 construction projects planned in 2023. I've completed the Kelly asphalt overlay, which is nice to get that done before Ragboro. I'm sure we'll get some visitors heading over to the phone booth or something. And we did pave through town since that is our road, since they're under 500 population. So it looks real nice through the town of Kelly, and we did some ADA sidewalk crossings while we're in there that had to come up to standard. So GW Carver, that should be probably September timeframe for an overlay up there. Five tenths south of Slater is going right now. It should be done tomorrow. Again, it's good to have that one done before Ragboro as well. S14 Bridge is our major bridge for the year that is started today. The road closed this morning. So we have a detour route in place over to R70 for approximately three months. The only other one I wanted to mention was the Collins 23 box covert. I show that as completed. We did actually have an issue, their precast box covert sections, we rejected one box section that had some steel issues. So it's sitting nearly complete. It's just that on one end, we need to wait for another section to get fabricated and brought up. I think that might get done this week. So that one did get delayed a bit, but so it's not completed quite yet. Moving on to construction project design, the 220th 13th Street Rise Project, we are proceeding with condemnation product, process for that to get the right away, so we can hopefully get that lit next spring and have 2024, 2024 construction. Couple other updates on that. We did make a request to DOT to look at increasing the cost estimate. They had to take that to the DOT commission, and that was denied. Hopefully that won't be too big of an issue because the DOT did have a pretty high cost estimate. They usually bump them up originally. I think it's 1.6 million. So hopefully we'll still come in that ballpark and won't need it, but we will not get the extra, the 50/50 project there. So the other thing is they do want it to run through our foreign to market account, which is probably a good thing in the end for the board to understand. That means we can cash flow it through our foreign to market account because we were talking about maybe bonding or something for this, once we figure out what the actual cost will be. This will buy us even more time because it can all be paid to the foreign to market account. And if we need to reimburse the foreign to market account after the project's completely done, we can do that. We can talk about those options later. And then lastly, on the condemnation process, I'm working with Ethan on that. We believe there's a secondary procedure that can be followed if you're just buying right away adjacent to existing roadways where the board of supervisor actually, the condemnation hearing you will run that here instead of going to a district judge, so that will buy us some time. But again, I'll update on that once Ethan gets that verified for us, if that's the process we're going to use. Still working with City Maxwell on the city bridge funds for the two bridges down there. The E29 covert still working, hopefully to get that done this fall. I mentioned, that's a long covert on a driveway that is an unbudgeted expense, but it needs to be done this fall. FY23 budget, we closed out the budget year well under a budget amount. That was mostly due to a number of items that we'll need to carry over. That's somewhat mostly typical in construction, but we did some major equipment deliveries that didn't come on time, tandem truck and sign truck. So about $400,000 there that'll need to carry over. And the slurry ceiling contract, we got the cracked ceiling done, but not the slurry, so it's going to carry over there too. So there will be some budget amendments necessary just to carry that over. The good news is a road use tax fund for FY20 came in about 400,000 over what we had budgeted. So that's the good news, much needed. And that's not due to fuel prices being high. Just wanted to remind you that that's due to more fuel being purchased and more vehicles getting registered and purchased. So unfortunately, we're not tied to the fuel price index, which we were. Bridge inspections, WHKS completed our bridge inspections in March and we received the bridge report just a few weeks ago. So we're starting to work on some of the recommended bridge repairs. We're also working with them to rerate a lot of our bridges for the new all systems permit. There's also some new federal inspection requirements for the next round that we're going to have to follow. Moving on to the federal transportation bill, some of the grants we've been applying for, we were approved for the safety grant SS4A to get a safety action plan done. Word of the point of hiring a consultant for that, that's for 97 counties combined. So should have a consultant soon on that. The BIP was turned down. We were not granted the 47 million, and we do have a had a meeting last week. I was not able to attend, but I'll get an update on with the feds on why we were not granted that. The raise, we're still working on the application for that. No, that one got approved. So Iowa did get nine bridges approved for 27, 24.7 million dollars. Unfortunately, none in Story County. Really, there was none in central Iowa at all. Wright County was the closest one. We're trying to hit the large bridges, two to five million dollar range that counties just cannot afford to do. And so that the good part about that is it'll, it'll bring us up higher in the competitive state funds that we have because it'll knock these bridges off that list that tend to get those funds. So we might get take advantage of that in the future. And lastly, the rule, that's a pavement grant. That's the one we're still working on the application, and unfortunately, we didn't make the cut mainly because we didn't have enough fatality accidents and major injury accidents on that route that goes through Colo that we applied for. So that was the main reason I didn't make that cut, but they did cut it down to, I think, 10 or 12 projects in the entire state they're going to apply for. So hopefully they get funded. 2022 legislation, the main thing was last bullet point there that all, all says from it I talked about, they did make some changes to that in this last legislative sessions. They will force us to include all of the paved foreign to market roads in our permit by 2025, but we've already got that on our approved list, so that really doesn't impact us all that much. We are working to get our gravel road bridges rated so we can add those to the system in the future. City of Ames Construction, Lincoln Highway got back open up. But 580th south of Lincoln Way is still closed. It's been longer than they estimated, but I don't have an update on that when they'll get reopened. There is a West 190th Traffic Study Presentation tonight at the Ames NPO Policy Meeting. Should get an update on what the recommendations are for the three intersections around West 190th. City of Nevada Construction, the city completed the South S Avenue sewer line crossing, and that was really the last thing they had for the sewer line. So that project is nearing completion. Nevada started a project on S14 under the railroad bridge just north of Nevada here. They ran into some issues. I'm not real sure what they are yet. We have a meeting with them one o'clock this afternoon, so I'll find out more about what's going on there. That's really delayed that project. We're also meeting Nevada this afternoon to talk about a 2080 maintenance agreement. We have been on a common agreement for many years, and Nevada has never wanted to do that. Now they're changing their minds. So we're gonna, let's see if we can put an agreement together. That's mainly for snow and ice control in the winter months, but we'll see how that meeting goes this afternoon. DOT Construction, the Highway 30 pavement reconstruction, all the grading's done. I understand it's going to sit for a while until the paving contractor can get in. So that's going to go till this fall. The S14 Bridge here in Nevada over 30 has the grading works going along strongly. And then the last thing is the 580th interchange is going along as well, the grading work. There was an issue that popped up on that, the one frontage road that's south of Highway 30 coming off the Sand Hill Trail. They discovered Nevada actually has a 16 inch water line that goes down that on private property that DOT did not discover until after the project was let. They're going to give us that frontage road when it's all done. The county will take jurisdiction of that frontage roads. So they built it right over the top of the 16 inch high pressure line. And some of the ditches exposed the line as well, so it has to be moved. And we wanted it out from underneath the roadway for future issues we could have with that because that line's 35 years old already. So we just got out of a meeting on that before it came to the board meeting here. The DOT is agreeing to pay for that, and it's a lot bigger project than I expected. It's about two and a half million dollars to move. The DOT is agreeing to pay for that and it's a lot bigger project than I expected. It's about two and a half million dollars to move that. But that process has started. So that's going to delay that frontage road a little bit on the construction side.
That one's to the south.
Yeah.
I was thinking we were getting the frontage road to the north.
The southwest one, there's a ramp that comes off that'll stay the DOTs, but then there'll be a frontage road from Sand Hill Trail. Because Sand Hill will be closed at Highway 30. So they have to use the frontage road to get over there. So.
Gotcha.
Ragbrae. Had another meeting on that last night. I think we're pretty well set. The route's been released and we've got some plans for some closures and we've put out some media releases on our website. For the most part, the recommendation July 25th for the incoming Ragbrae and the next morning, July 26th. Just avoid the R 38 and Highway 30 area completely. The people that live there. Ice bullies are here. They're going to have difficulties because they're going to shut down the off ramps to both off ramps to Highway 30. So you won't be able to get off and to R 38 both days. And then heading north into Ames, they'll have Mortenson closed off completely. So even if you can get over 30, you want anywhere to go. You have to turn around and head back south there. So. It's going to be. Interesting for a couple of days with the number of bikers are talking. The good news is R 38 just had an overlay. So it's nice and smooth. No concern safety wise there. But yeah, the West Ames people are going to have a difficult time getting to Des Moines if they work in Des Moines. Then the morning of the 26th, the recommendation there is to get, take Lincoln Way over to the interchange in Boone County and get on Highway 30 and head back towards I 35. Because if you head south at all, you're going to run in, in even Madrid, you'll run into the Ragbrae traffic and get cut off. So. Ash trees, we started to see many areas where the ash trees are dying in the road right of ways. We kind of thought that would happen, but we didn't realize how many we had until they started dying. You could see them easy now. One of the main ones is on West 190th where the old Oaks Golf Course was. We're going to have to work with them this winter. Half of them are on private and half are in the county road right of ways. We're going to have to hire three specialists to come and get those removed. But we're going to have those all over the county here in the next couple of years. It's going to take some extra effort. Brines Districts, Boltland Mink, they're working on some repair options in DD 11. And they're also planning to complete an engineer study on that for the rest of the districts. We can maybe hold another meeting, discuss the overall district. We also just had a meeting come up with Bolton and make in Summit. Pipeline for this Thursday, discuss how we're going to start locating the drainage district tiles that they're going to encounter. They're going to work with Bolton and make to help. Find those, but we're going to have Summit do the contracting and do the digging to help find them. Lastly, job openings. We currently have three due to vacancies and it does appear we'll find. The applicants with CDLs, but it's harder and harder to find them. I did, we did hear Ames mention they have a training program. That's one of the. CDL trainings is part of their program. We just found that recently where they will train anybody in Story County. And so that's a, a big benefit and hope some people take advantage of that because. We're finding fewer, fewer younger people getting the CDLs with the new training requirements that are needed.
The city of Ames will train them or the DOT office in Ames?
It's part of the. I just saw on the website and then we, I heard it mentioned it just a bit ago when they were talking about the workforce training program. It said you just had to be in the story county. You don't have to be in city veins and they'll train anybody in it. I don't know who does the training and we need to figure out if that does actually get them certified or if that just trains them on how to become a CDL operator. I'm not sure. You do a little more checking on that, but if it gets them actually trained, that's a very beneficial program. That is all I have. Any questions?
No, no, thank you so much. And thanks again for the tour that you gave us a few weeks back. It's always, it's always really interesting. I appreciate you taking your entire morning to drive us around and show us stuff.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next departmental report, we have planning and development quarterly report. Good morning.
Hi Marcus here to help me. Fill in the gaps of what I can't remember we did.
Okay. Okay. So. Permits are still very low. With interest rates and construction costs high, it's just not getting better. And I think the most surprising trend is of the dwellings that are getting built. They are twice as much in value and size as the ones in previous quarters that we've seen. So the average dwelling value this quarter was 434,000 dollars that was newly constructed. And that's just based on our valuation scale. It's more like, you know, a million dollar home. Whereas in past quarters, you know, in 2017, we were at 225,000. So it's just a surprising trend. I will also say that solar arrays are still our number one accessory use. So there's a lot of solar installs happening in Story County, and we've seen that for the past few years, really since 2020. Right, Marcus? Yeah. Okay. So development cases. Oh, and this is a map of where the permits were located. So. Let's see residential is brown and that includes new houses and accessory structures. So we've got a pretty good. Amount in South Highway 30, which was an interesting geographic spread this quarter. Development cases, we're, we're getting back up there. So we had two conditional use permits for bed and breakfasts with event venues. We had a minor subdivision. We had a vacation request. And so we've been pretty busy in terms of development cases, which is good. I'm glad to see that number going back up. And then of course, we had the natural resources protection ordinance. We had a special event permit for the Ames triathlon. Roland and Nevada both had annexations that you all reviewed. We did purchase the disaster debris site. We did an amendment to our hazardous liquid pipeline ordinance. And then we also had one of our first appeals, which was a pretty reasonable request. And that will facilitate a new residential development off of Dayton Road at 190th. Redivision of some existing lots just for a few new homes back there. And that'll meet our natural resources ordinance protection. So you'll just be seeing that in the next few months. And then this is our work program. So we had a pretty good quarter for crossing items off the work program. I will say. I think coming up, we're going to have the home business ordinance reviewed, the conditional use permit ordinance reviewed, and then the minimum levels of service ordinance. Minimum levels of service, I'm going to draft, and then one of our planners will bring forward in the next couple of months. And that again, would be looking at where it's appropriate to cite residential development and amounts and densities. And then updating the C2C plan to map those areas based on how you identify what's an appropriate, you know, standard. How far off a gravel road, those kinds of things. So that's what's coming up. We can take any questions. I don't have any. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. No, we have no other reports, any upcoming agenda items? I will have here soon. I don't know if you already have it. For the opioid overdose awareness month and day information. I'll have that coming up soon. But that would be all I have. So now it's time for public comment. Number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Looks like we have one request to make public comment. Lynn Camito. If you want to go ahead and come up to the table, did I say your last name right? Awesome. And you'll want to push the button on the microphone so it turns green.
Okay, thank you. I'm Lynn Camito and.
Yeah, you can let go of it. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. My first time coming to one of the Board of Supervisors meeting and I'm not really a public speaker. So I apologize if I seem a little nervous or if I'm rambling. So I did want to come today to just offer some comments and concerns about the subdivision process. Specifically for residents who live in the non-urban growth areas of the Ames Urban French. And what really prompted, what really prompted this is my husband and I, we live in an area in the urban fringe, which has not been identified for urban growth, not been identified for annexation by the city. And we're interested in doing a minor parcel split. And boy, we've encountered a lot of road, roadblocks from the city of Ames. Our, our request does not involve any development, like literally, we're not going to mow down one blade of grass. But what we're finding is that the C2C plan and. All of these definitions and guidelines and principles are now sort of being used to, as excuses to restrict our ability to, to split and sell an acre of our property with the house on it to our daughter. So this is just, I wanted to offer this as. A word of caution regarding urban plans and urban planners. I've been reading a lot about this and. A lot of times urban plans are, are kind of messaged using really positive and progressive ideals that are a little bit abstract. For example, green spaces are good. We want to save the environment. But there's a dark side to all of that, which is the erosion of property rights of, of rural residents. There's, there tends to be a towards urbanization. For urban planners to sort of use liberal urbanization principles and try to apply that to rural residents. So when I, I've been reading through a lot of these plans and I'm reading about rural characteristics of, of. What are the rural characteristics in Story County? But what's really missing from a lot of that is any sort of sense of the people involved, right? And why people want to live in, in rural areas. So and typically people want to live in rural areas because they want less government. And they, they want more autonomy to make decisions about their property and how they're going to use their property. So. From, you know, my concern then is do we see this trend towards. Urbanization sort of being forced on rural property owners with, without it really being messaged as, as such. I also guess I want to put a plea in here about. The importance of making it a priority for Story County Planning and Development to communicate to individual property owners. What impact? Some of these land designations and definitions will have on rural residents. For example. We recently had our land designated as a natural resource area, right? Sounds great until we want to do something with our property. And then we find out that the city's going to say, oh, no, you can't because now it's been designated as a natural resource area. So too bad for you. And it's kind of like a restrictive covenant. Being applied kind of retroactively, but based on all of these definitions that are, that are occurring. So. I think that what we really need next, and I appreciate all the planning that has gone into the C2C plan and the land designations. I know it's a lot of work, but I think the most important thing for property owners. Is to know how does, what does that mean for my property? What does that mean for my ability to split my property or to sell an acre to my neighbor? Can I sell an acre to my kids? And I think that that's the most important thing for property owners to know. And that's something that from what I'm reading and experiencing right now. I think that's something that can be figured out, right? Because I think that the county and the city planning department pretty much know how they're going to use these, these definitions and designations to place restrictions on your, your rural residents, but it's just not being done in a transparent way. So. So I wanted to suggest that. The other thing I wanted to suggest regarding the, the potential for another 28E agreement regarding subdivisions is I really want to encourage you to take a look at, at Johnson County. They have all of their information online on their website and I'll, I'll send you a link later on. I called Johnson County Planning last week after joint, after going through this process in Story County. It's kind of frustrating because. I've been given a lot of excuses for why the process has taken so long for us, not, not Story County. It's, it's city of Ames at this point in time, but it's, it's kind of been done with Story County's blessing. I think it's the way, it's the way that we feel is that Story County is kind of acting as like almost a surrogate of the city of Ames Planning Department. In Johnson County, a request, something like what we're, we're requesting to do would not even be reviewed by the city council. Like for Iowa City, Cedar Falls, Coralville, like a parcel split. When you're taking a parcel and splitting it two ways and there's no development. They said that would just not even be reviewed by the city. They would just waive the review authority and send it back to the county to handle. And it would be quick and easy and efficient. So. They have areas that have urban fringe agreements and 28E agreements and areas that don't. And so what I'm, I guess I'm trying to communicate to you is that it doesn't matter if they have it or not. Their processes are a lot more easy and quicker and less administratively burdens than for their residents. And so I have to question why that is. So I'm, I'll send you the link to Johnson County. I, you know, and I did call and talk to their planning and zoning department. And or their planning and development department. And they said, yeah, that would. Our city councils are not going to get involved with something like that. Just if it's in a non-growth area. It's going to be quick and easy for our county residents. So I will send you some more comments. I know I've taken a long time, a lot of your time and I apologize for that. I hope that there's a public comment opportunity if there's another 28E plan under consideration before it's lined. So that Story County residents can give some more feedback. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Lynn, I would encourage you to stop in and talk to planning and development if you have questions about the natural resource area designation at some point. Moving to liaison assignments. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comments? Hey, seeing no one, we'll close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Merkin, would you like to start?
Thank you. The Ames area Metroproblem Planning Organization of the AAMPO is meeting tonight at six o'clock. And we will get our first formal look at the 190th corridor study. I don't think any decisions will be made tonight because I know that several people are not going to be, are traveling, aren't going to be there. But it is talking about the three intersections on 190th Hyde, Highway 69, NGW Carver, and making recommendations there. So I'm very, I've, I've read through about half of the study and hope to have it all done by tonight. There's a whole lot in it. Tomorrow we have a strategic planning session for the county in the morning. Tomorrow, we have a strategic planning session for the county in the morning. In the evening, I have a story county emergency management commission meeting, CERTP meeting on Thursday. Also, story county economic development about the same time, I guess, then a roundtable discussion on property taxes at the chamber. And the Iowa Creek WMA later in the afternoon. Friday, I have a meeting on broadband on this joint story Boone County application. And there's a town hall on that Health and Human Services is having on some service delivery study that they're, they're doing, which is a really kind of fast tracked thing, because they supposedly they're taking public input, but it's gonna have the study all done this fall on how they're going to change up the Health and Human Services. That'll be really, really interesting. So looking forward to that, that's a lot of meetings. Monday is gonna be a little, a little slower. Do you have one meeting? The Center for Rural Affairs, they're and interested in how they're going to work with Headwaters WMA. So we're gonna do that on Monday and then as we all know, ragbray. So that's the week.
Turned off my mic. Supervisor Hens.
Sure, I have the same strategic planning session tomorrow on my calendar as well. Supervisor Merkin, I do have you doing KHI radio Thursday morning.
I am.
Okay, I just, I didn't hear you mention that, so I just wanna make sure. I also plan on attending the story kind of economic development meeting and then running over to the Ames Chamber for the property tax legislation update. And then the town hall for Health and Human Services is that afternoon via Zoom. And then Friday and Monday, I will be out of the office.
Are there two town halls on the HHS? Cause I have it on Friday.
I believe it's, there might.
I think there are.
There are two and I chose the Thursday one.
Okay, got it. Good.
Okay, this afternoon I have the Story County Housing Trust meeting. And then I am going to the YSK awards this afternoon. And then I have a central, I have a regional housing authority meeting in Des Moines this evening or Clive. The strategic planning session tomorrow. Tomorrow evening, I have a CCJ executive committee meeting. And then Thursday through Tuesday, I will be in Austin, Texas at the National Association of Counties Conference. I will be back, I will try and zoom in to our meeting on Tuesday. Depending on the airport situation, I will be back in the office Wednesday afternoon, the twenty sixth. Anything else? Okay.
Have fun in Texas.
Thanks.
It's still gonna be hot.
Yeah, what are they calling it? A heat dome?
Heat dome. Yep, that's my family's under it right now.
Yep. I'm looking forward to it. It should be a really good conference, so. All right, if nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded Merkin.
I.
Hens.
I.
Basil, I, we're adjourned. Thank you.